Sunshine Notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. The time is now 7:04. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the December 7th, 2023 Issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Petracco?
Here.
Mayor Kelly?
Present.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no minutes, no executive session minutes, no communications. So we'll move right into our proclamation, which is why I imagine the majority of the audience is here this evening. And I will read this proclamation on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. Whereas the Nutley High School Raider Marching Band has a longstanding tradition of excellence, and that is a very longstanding tradition, embodying the dedication, hard work of its students, parents, faculty, and all those who support the program. Whereas the Nutley High School Raider Marching Band achieved outstanding success during the 2024 competition season, and whereas 2024 marks the 30th anniversary of the Raider Marching Band's participation in local, regional, and national competitions. And whereas on Saturday, October 26th, 2024, the Nutley Raider Marching Band earned first place in Group 3A at the U.S. Bands New Jersey State Championships in Franklin, New Jersey, achieving a score of 91.3 and securing caption awards for best percussion, best visual, and best overall effect. Whereas the band's season concluded with a stellar performance at the U.S. Bands National Championships in Allentown, Pennsylvania, on Saturday, November 9th, 2024, where the Raider Marching Band competed against 13 other programs and captured first place and was crowned national champions in Group 3A with a historic score of 96.1, earning caption awards for best music, best percussion, and best visual. Whereas the Raider Marching Band achieved an undefeated competition season, setting a new school record with the highest score ever and earning numerous caption awards, including best percussion at every event. Whereas the 52-member Nutley Raider Marching Band is under the leadership of Band Director and Supervisor of Fine and Performing Arts, Mr. Vincent Vicarello, Assistant Band Director, Ms. Julia Ware, Drum Majors Rachel Bonilla and Emerson Morales, and received administrative support from Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kent Bagna, and Principal, Mr. Dennis Williams. Now therefore it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County, Vessick State of New Jersey, commends and congratulates the members of Nutley High School Raider Marching Band and their staff for their exceptional achievements this season and for representing Nutley High School and the entire Nutley community with distinction, talent, hard work, and determination. Congratulations. Commissioner Evans, do you have any additional notes?
Just, I apologize for my call this evening. I'm going to keep my comments brief, but I just want to offer again my personal congratulations. It's a stellar performance. You guys are incredible. I look forward to new heights coming back every year because I enjoy the opportunity when we are able to recognize our young people for all the talent that they have and the honor that they bring to Nutley. So congratulations.
I'd also like to lend my congratulations not only to our outstanding marching band, who you continue to surprise us. All right, whenever we think we've peaked and this is it, this is the best one ever, the next one comes along under the leadership of Mr. Vicarello and his team and the administration and the entire board for the support that they lent to you. I just want you to know how very proud we are of you and how we will always support everything that you do. Congratulations.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes, congratulations. National champions. Wow. I don't think any other varsity sport or anything has been national champions in the history of Nutley. So that's, that's a really, really great thing.
Two. Two, right?
Two national champs.
Last three years.
Yep. And so I, I, what I'll say is to Mr. Vicarello, welcome back. And I saw him, one of our meetings, I don't know if it was a commission meeting or planning board meeting, he was in the room behind us directing from the top of the second floor what's going on. So it, he, you know, he, he thought that was a better viewpoint than being up on that little high-low thing. So, but congratulations, you all did a great job. To your parents, to your parents, congratulations to you, getting them to all the practices, following them to all their competitions. So congratulations to all.
I'm up. I just like to say congratulations. It's unbelievable. A lot of times, I, to all the coaches' parents too. My father played in a band many years ago with somebody, maybe on this side of the room, usually would know Frankie Valley. I'm sure the kids don't, but unfortunately I never picked up an instrument. But I have to say that is astonishing to me, to all the coaches, as well as how you guys are back here every year after year after year. And late at night, when everybody wants that police escort, we're very happy to do it in public safety. I wish you guys could come home a little earlier. However, when Sam calls me or Sal Scarpelli calls me for the escort, I'm like, let me guess, the baseball team, the football team, soccer, and it's always, no, it's the band again. So God bless you guys, keep up the great work. You make Nutley really, really shine. We're all proud of you. Thank you.
Every time a competition team comes before this board, I always challenge them, you know, the hard work starts now, I want to see you guys back here next year, and you guys answered the challenge and you came back. And so I want to wish you guys a congratulations, but I also want to reissue the challenge because I want to see you guys back here next year. I want to congratulate you, I want to congratulate your coaches and your families because no one sacrifices alone, your achievements are in part, your family's sacrifice as well. And one of the things I always say is Nutley is a destination in life, and you guys are making it a destination for fine and performing arts and music. And I imagine not just Nutley, but a lot of surrounding communities, the state and the nation has recognized Nutley as a center for, for great band performances and performing arts, and they may be looking at Nutley to come here and be part of this program, and that's because of you. And so I want to wish you guys a congratulations and I want to see you back here next year. Good luck. I see Mr. Bagna's in the audience. Did you want to say anything or? Mr. Vicarello, did you want to say a few words?
Mayor Kelly, Commissioners, thank you. I see many of you on a regular occasion throughout town. Commissioner Petracco and Ms. Corella, before I forget, thank you very much for both our escorts. Yes, we will say both. It is an honor to stand in front of all of these students, their families, and our town for this wonderful accomplishment. And my staff and I, tonight I have Mr. Mayeski and Mrs. Furtado with me. We cannot be more proud of what they've done each and every year. It's truly, it takes a village, as I said at the Board of Ed meeting, without everybody's support, we can't do this without the board, without Mr. Bagna knocking on their door about things, and they support everything that we ask and that we do, from the truck drivers to the bus drivers, to our boosters program, to the parents who wait for their kids a half an hour after they're supposed to be out. Don't worry, it's all, they're all yours now. So we truly thank you for this. It is a great honor for what they've done, the first time ever in Nutley history, states and nationals, and they are the ones who deserve all the recognition for that. So thank you very much.
You guys want to come up for a photo?
Congratulations, everybody.
Tell everybody that Sean can be greatly honored us by staying to the entire meeting.
We estimate it a million three. They're going to get 2% and go home and that may pay less.
I just, I was thinking, I just.
Really, because he couldn't eat. He's recovering from hernia. He's fine. Melanoma is fine. I just, he had a hernia and he had to go through surgery for that. It took a long time to get him healed, so he couldn't eat. Couldn't eat. Good, he's fine. Skeleton. And but the issue is, you know, what is in the system is gone, he can't rebuild that quickly. So I hope he's thinking, Kelly.
So, Social Security matter? No. Oh, I got mine. Okay. So I get, I get my, it looks like. They gave us two and a half percent. It's an increase, a raise the risk.
See, I'm full-time employed, so I don't take far behind. Thank you very much. You did that for, you're the one going to jail for it.
Okay. Well, congratulations again to the Nutley High School Raider Marching Band. Moving on, we have reports. Commissioner Petracco?
Yes, I have my public safety report. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Bills, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, we have a bill list for December 3rd, 2024. Public Affairs, $188,982.45. Revenue and Finance, $2,875,820.67. Public Safety, $80,865.95. Public Works, $4,607.14. Parks and Public Property, $871,852.11. Water Utility, $36,060.77. Payroll as of November 22nd, 2024, regular payroll total, $954,149.77. Overtime payroll total, $71,256.18. Total payroll, $1,025,405.95, for a grand total of $5,083,595.4.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have public comment on agenda items only. This is public comment on agenda items only. If you have a public comment on anything on our agenda this evening, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record, please. Seeing none, moving on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans?
Nothing for me this evening.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, beginning on Friday night, we will have our annual play at the high school. This year's production, once again, is elf. It'll run Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday afternoon, so I encourage everyone to come. We have some fantastic performers there, and I'm sure you're going to be very proud of our children.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scarpelli? Commissioner Petracco?
Yes, I believe we do have our public safety Christmas festival. Sam, what time is it Thursday? Santa me ingreed. Thank you. Thank God for Sam. What time was it again? So it's 5:00 to 7:30 at public safety this Thursday, right, Sam? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. The Department of Public Affairs and Health has it happening right now, so you can still make it at the Knights of Columbus, our small business sip and shop, so you can support our local businesses and buy some of your holiday shopping over there. We also have, coming up this Sunday, on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, our annual holiday tree lighting and menorah lighting event. We all are welcome. It's a free event, and it's going to be right here, right in front of Town Hall, where we're going to turn on the lights for the Christmas tree for the first time this year. We also have our holiday treasure chest. If you are able, we have a lot of families in need, please come to the Department of Public Affairs and Health Department and donate some gift cards. We can take cash, gift cards, this way the families can go out and buy holiday gifts. And last but not least, as many of you know, we are updating our garbage system. Garbage cart distribution began today and will be continuing through the next two weeks, so be on the lookout for your garbage cart. If you have any questions, feel free to contact the Health Department or consult our website. Also, we will be having an information session, a second information session, on December 12th at 7:00 PM, right here in the commission chamber. So if you have any questions, you can feel free to bring them before, before the, myself at that meeting. And that's, that's, that was a mouthful, you don't have that many announcements, but that's all I have. So moving on to ordinance introductions, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I have an ordinance introduction on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. It relates to something very different from what the town normally does with ordinances and appropriations for funding. And I think it's actually a, an essential step and a continuing step in terms of the cooperation between the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners and what was possible for what we can do under the umbrella of, of the idea of One Nutley. This, the idea of this is, is very direct and very simple. In the end, it did take many months and many hours, Saturdays, sometimes on a Sunday, Sal, where we would meet and go, go through all of this. Joe Bataglia is not here tonight. Unfortunately, he's, he's out of town, but instrumental to getting this across the finish line has been the tireless effort of Joe, not only as it relates to this particular transaction to help the school, but also in terms of his courage and his ability, especially his financial ability, to face the issues that our school board encountered and actually be willing to stand up before a very angry town to explain what happened and, and take the brunt of that heat. Joe's an exceptional financial talent, he's an exceptional analyst, and to a degree, I'm disappointed that he won't be able to continue his role on the board, but I hope that he continues to be an active resident in town for all the value that he provides. To that end, we started several months ago talking about how the school district, which was facing a significant demand, to say, we need to move to better space for our offices, we need to figure out a way to meet the expectations of the state around our pre-K program and early child development. And we're faced with the fact that we're in a very tight financial environment. We are also, we know that we tried a couple times to advance a large referendum, which the township came back on both occasions and said no. So the question was, can we put our thinking caps on and come up with a different way to approach the solution? And the way that came about was to add new infrastructure to the school district and the township. The township of Nutley, through this ordinance, will acquire property located at 777 Bloomfield Avenue and the corner parking lot, which will be leased to the school district under a long-term, a longer-term arrangement, which will allow the school district to move off of Franklin Avenue, it will allow more pre-K students in its initial form be able to take advantage of the pre-K program. But it does more, and it does significantly more in that the, it creates the opportunity that without a 70, 80 million dollar referendum, the school district has the ability to move the sixth grade into the middle school structure, creating the opportunity to change the educational structure of our students, their development, from a K through six to a K through five and a seven, eight program in the middle, in the middle sector to a six, seven, eight program, which studies show is infinitely better for the, the school district and the development of our children and avoids the significant risks of stagnation. And so this ordinance, by introduction, we normally read it by title, but given the significance of this, I felt it was important to convey the hard work of the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education coming together to move this forward. I, before I read it, Mr. Bagna, would you like to have additional comments? And Mr. Ferraro?
I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to the Board of Commissioners for their collaboration with the Board of Education to find a solution to our ongoing space challenges in the most economic way for our taxpayers. Two years ago, our boards, through subcommittees, began an open dialogue to address these critical issues, recognizing the need to plan for the future of our students and community. Last year, we took a significant step forward by implementing a shared service agreement between our boards. This partnership has been instrumental in translating discussions into accountable plans. As a result of this agreement, our boards successfully renovated the front of the Nutley High School, the gymnasium auditorium at the Ractiff Elementary School, and developed plans for further improvements to several of the district's other properties. Together, the boards developed a forward-thinking strategy to address the district's base needs. The plan to purchase the building and lease it to the Nutley School District is transformative. It allows for the continued expansion of the state-funded pre-K program, the relocation of board offices from Franklin Avenue, the transition of sixth grade to the middle school, and the creation of additional classroom space at our elementary schools. Impressively, this plan accomplishes what we would have required a significant expansion to the middle school, estimated just a few years, four years ago, at over $80 million for a fraction of the cost. By taking the strategic and cost-effective approach, we're addressing critical needs while positioning our district to implement a true middle school model within the next two years. This will create an optimal environment for our students to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Our superintendent, Kent Bagna, will further highlight the benefits of this plan, but I like to emphasize that the initiative not only prevents stagnation, but also opens the door for new opportunities for growth and progress. By transitioning our sixth grade students to the middle school, we're establishing a cohesive campus structure for grades six through eight, enhancing the learning environment and improving our overall student experience. Additionally, the shared service vision enables middle school students to enroll in advanced courses at the high school, strengthening their academic journey and improving our elementary and middle school curriculum. This approach aligns our resources to provide students with a seamless and enriched educational path. This plan has the full support of the Nutley Board of Education, the administration, and our monitor, all of whom recognize the long-term value for our community. Their support underscores the importance of this collaborative effort and the lasting benefits it will bring. This is truly a testament to what we can achieve when we work together for the benefit of our community. Thank you to the Nutley Board of Commissioners for your leadership, partnership, and unwavering commitment to the success of Nutley Schools and our children's future. And finally, I want to extend a special thank you to Commissioner Evans and trustee Joe Bataglia for their tireless efforts in bringing this opportunity to fruition. Your hard work and commitment have been instrumental in making this vision a reality. But thank you all for all your efforts, and I know this has been a long journey. It began two years ago when Mayor Scarpelli put together a group of, you know, board members, Commissioner Tucci, Commissioner Evans. We started meeting with our, with our board and having dialogue, and I know Mayor Kelly, you expanded that to include Commissioner Petracco, and so this is a complete board effort, and we are grateful for your, everything that you have done for this community and for our Board of Education, our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Sal mentioned trustee Bataglia and Commissioner Evans put a lot of time and effort, as well as all
of time and effort, as well as all the commissioners. But Sal put a lot of time and effort. I'd like to recognize Sal. All of these conversations would be unlikely without Sal's influence on our board and his leadership. So I do appreciate everything you've done. We also have a couple of other board trustees here, Charlie Kozinski, Dr. Tom Delia, Nick Scotty in the back, and Dan Fraginels joins us in this chamber. I would like to take a moment to recognize and commend tonight's resolution for allowing the lease purchase of a building that will add 10 classrooms to Nutley Public Schools and facilitate the relocation of our board office to a more efficient space. This pivotal step will serve as a catalyst for much-needed growth and restructuring within our district. The addition of these classrooms is an essential move to address the increasing demands in our school system. Several key initiatives will be supported by this resolution, including space for our students and movement that will lead to the transition of sixth grade students from the elementary school to John Walker Middle School in September 2026. I want to be clear that this, that this key piece of infrastructure, the sixth grade, with this key piece of infrastructure, the sixth grade will be able to transition to the middle school, which will provide a more cohesive, developmentally appropriate environment for our students as they progress through the middle years of education. It will allow for more opportunities to explore specialized instruction in greater alignment with the curriculum. It will appropriately promote social and emotional growth while increasing student independence, which is critical in these ages, as well as accelerate learning for many students moving forward. This move will open classroom space at our neighborhood elementary schools, which will be restructured to span preschool through grade five. This adjustment will ensure that our elementary schools can focus on delivering a more targeted, age-appropriate learning experience. Additionally, the expansion of preschool to full capacity will help ensure that all families in Nutley have access to high-quality, state-funded, early education, providing a strong foundation for our youngest learners. These initiatives together will help prevent stagnation in our school district and position the Nutley Public Schools for continued success in the years ahead. I thank the Board of Commissioners for supporting our shared vision and commitment to the future of our students and our community. This move of sixth grade is something that the district has been working towards for quite some time and are now able to do so with the generous support of the town commissioners. Thank you.
Any other comments before I read the, the ordinance?
I'll start. I think this is a, a step forward. It's a creative step forward. You know, a couple of years ago, we all came together to find a solution to the overcrowding. This, this not only opens up the elementary schools, also provides for pre-K. And I think we will see strides in our academics that we would have not have seen otherwise. It 'll increase our property values and, and what Commissioner Petracca always talks about, our scores. So I think this is a great step forward at a fraction of the cost of expanding the middle school. So.
Commissioner Scarpelli, you're correct tonight. But I also talk about a couple of other things. First of all, in Nutley, the kids have always come first. So I want to commend the Board of Ed, the Commissioners for working together because they are our true treasures. And the second thing that Commissioner Scarpelli left out that I always say is that how our schools go is how our town will go. So we have to keep the schools up. We have to invest in them. We have to keep them going. It reflects our property values in towns, and it attracts good people because good people want good schools for their kids. My parents were from Newark. They came to Nutley because of the school system. And, you know, we have to continue to invest in that. So congratulations to the Board of Ed. I'm looking forward to it. I think it's a really well, well-thought-out investment, and I'm excited to get that ready for, you know, our kids of town. Thank you.
At, at the risk of being redundant, I just would like to commend both boards for the efforts put forth. I don't think we've ever had this level of cooperation here in Nutley. And we've always had a good relationship with our Board of Education, but nothing that even comes close to, to where it is today and where it will continue to go. With our children, we get one shot. Okay? There are no do-overs. All right? There's no, no summer school helps a little bit, but it, it doesn't help the overall picture. So the improvement of our children's education is probably the most important thing that we can do here in Nutley. And again, at the risk of being redundant, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Evans and trustee Bataglia and President and all of the members that are here this evening that have supported this through the years. I think this will be monumental for the township. Thank you.
And one of the things that I always say is our most valuable resource, you know, isn't our parks, isn't our public safety, which you can't put a price on. It, it's our, it's our, our kids and our young people. And that's the most important thing that we can invest in in the community. And, you know, we're a victim of our own success. The, the school systems are great, and people want to come here, and it puts strain on it. And so we need to find more ways to improve and be better and always stay ahead of the curve. So that way, our kids can stay ahead of the curve, and they can go out and continue to make this town shine and become, and continue to be a destination for all people, for all walks of life. So, you know, this, this partnership is a great thing, and it's only getting started, and it'll continue in the future. So good luck to you guys, and good luck, I guess, to us as well. I'll turn it back over to Commissioner Evans.
So with the introduction of this bond ordinance, in effect, what we're able to do is for $9.8 million, we will be able to acquire 777 Bloomfield Avenue fully improved and ready for use by the school district in time for September of 2025 versus, you know, if you look back at the old plans, in today's dollars, you'd be looking at 70, 80 million dollars in terms of referendum. And by doing this, we actually have the ability to take a referendum off the table for the foreseeable future. So with that, bond ordinance number 3574, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, providing for the acquisition of lands and buildings and structures thereon in by the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $9.8 million therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $8 million in bonds or notes of the township for financing part of the cost thereof. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun, together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on January 7, 2025. So moved.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye, abstain.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
And moving right along to ordinances on public hearing and second reading, Commissioner Evans.
Yes, this is an ordinance appropriating up to $50,000 to replace a vehicle in revenue and finance. We've been advised that one of our Jeeps is no longer repairable, so it's time to replace it. So we, we wore it out. So this is actually acquiring a vehicle for replacement for the code enforcement office.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on ordinance number 3570, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record.
Move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
3571 is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. This is the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with the potential redeveloper for the Chickolini site. And it's one, one more step in moving that transaction forward.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to be heard on ordinance number 3571, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record.
Move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's it for ordinances.
Move the ordinance.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. Now that's it for ordinances. We'll move on to resolutions. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the treasurer hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of $5,477 for the lot and blocks in the resolution. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Whereas RS 48 colon 5 dash 17 allows for the cancellation of property tax credits or delinquent amounts in the amount of less than $10, whereas the governing body may authorize the tax collector to process without further action on their part, any cancellation of property tax credits and delinquencies less than $10. Now therefore be removed, resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereby authorized that the tax collector cancel said amounts as deemed necessary. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, New Jersey, then in accordance with the provisions of RS 48 colon 4 dash 58, following transfers of appropriations in the 24 budget, may and the same are hereby authorized and approved from Economic Development, $18,550, unemployment compensation of $1,500, to Treasurer's Office owing a $18,550, and interest on bonds owing a $1,500 for a total amount of $20,500. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need for the services of an outside council to provide consultation services regarding employment matters, whereas a firm, a law firm of Tool Scrivo, 14 Dilich Park Road, Cedar Grove, New Jersey, is qualified to provide said services, whereas Tool Scrivo has submitted a 23 P schedule to provide such services, an hourly rate of $295 for legal services by attorneys, and whereas the amount will not exceed $25,000 for the period, November 20, 2024, through November 19, 2025, and funds are available in account 401 208 205 and 501 208 205, which will be certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being subject to the adoption of the 25 municipal budget. Whereas the law firm of Tool Scrivo has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committing a township in the previous one year that would violate NJSA 19 colon 44A 20 dot 5, where the township's local paid to play ordinance or New Jersey Election Law Enforcement Commission disclosure requirements, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, contracts for outside council to provide con, the state, the Board of Commissioners, excuse me, it's not worded correctly, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for outside council services to provide consultation services as follows. The mayor and the township clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute, seal, and deliver a 24 contract for professional legal services with Tool Scrivo pursuant to a non-fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 19 A, 19 colon 44A 20 dot 5, for a term beginning November 2024 through November 19, 2025, for the stated hourly rate, a rate of $295, not to exceed $25,000. A copy of this resolution, as well as the contract and the said disclosure, certification and entity disclosure for campaign contributions shall be placed on file with the clerk. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you. Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire Vision Care Network Plan Services on behalf of the township, and whereas such services may be acquired as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19 colon 44A dash 2.4 or 2.5 is appropriate. And whereas premier option benefits, 990 Cedar Bridge Avenue, Brick, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating they will provide the services for the sum of $1,462. And whereas funds will be available from account 5 dash 01 527 242 upon adoption of the 2025 municipal budget, and have been certified or will be certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley authorizes the mayor and township clerk to enter into a contract with premier option benefits. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, then in accordance with the provisions of RS 40A colon 4 dash 58, the following transfer appropriations in the 2024 budget B and same are hereby authorized and approved for the Department of Parks and Public Property, from health insurance in the amount of $75,610 to parks and playgrounds, salaries and wages, and other insurance, other expenses for a like amount. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Whereas Department of Parks and Public Property, determined due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participations in programs offered. And whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined a need to refund families, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer being is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below. For our neighbors at 25 Maple Place for travel basketball in the amount of $125, our neighbors at 61 Columbia for competition chair in the amount of 100, and our neighbors at 4 Hickory Road for travel basketball in the amount of $125 off of the 2024 year. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I see our Board of Ed is still here. Did you guys want us to take a short break so you can leave? Or are you waiting for? Yeah, we can skip ahead to, if you guys want to, if you guys wanted to say anything? Yeah. Well, thank you for all that you do for the town, Nutley, and for our children.
Good night, guys.
Thank you. Yeah, you guys are welcome to stay.
Now, this is beginning to feel more natural.
Okay, moving on, Commissioner Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with provisions of RS, RS 48 4 dash 58, the following transfers of appropriation in the 2024 budget B and the same are hereby authorized and approved from road repair and maintenance, other expenses, $75,000 to road repair, maintenance, salary and wage, $75,000. Weeden Leaf Removal Salary Wage 5,000 to NJDS Stormwater Street Division Salary Wage 5,000. And from Passaic Valley Water Commission, other expenses to North Jersey Division District Water, other expenses $17,000 for a total of $97,000. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Whereas Department of Public Works announces, announces that there will be free two-hour metered parking from December 16, 2024, through January 1, 2025. Whereas the suspension of metered parking during the holidays is a Nutley tradition to promote our business district and support local merchants. And whereas the free two-hour parking will allow ample time for residents to take the opportunity to leisurely walk and shop Nutley first. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, will allow free two-hour metered parking from December 16, 2024, through January 1, 2025. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Whereas bids for 2023 acceptance of recycling vegetative waste to include leaf and grass clippings were received and opened on September 28, 2022. Whereas S. Retundi and Sons, P.O. Box 1407, Summit, New Jersey, was the low bidder. Whereas Esprit Tundi and Sons, P.O. Box 1407, Summit, New Jersey, was the low bidder for the removal and recycle of a Class B clean wood brush in the amount of $18.85 per cubic yard for the removal and recycle of Class C leaves, amount of $12.45 per cubic yard. And for the removal and recycle of Class C grass clippings in amount of $25.85 per cubic yard. Whereas Esprit Tundi was awarded a one-year contract term beginning February 1st, 2023, with an option for a two-one-year extension at the same price or agreed upon pre-stated increase and subject to availability funds in the subsequent annual budget. Whereas the contract was extended for an additional one year beginning February 7th, 2024 through February 6th, 2025. Whereas the change order to the contract is unauthorized for increase in the amount of contract to $20,000. And where our funds are available from account number 401-422-209, the amount not to exceed $20,000 have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Whereas the original contract amount is being increased in the amount of $20,000 for a total adjusted contract of $100,000. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one is a change from the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with Esprit Tundi and Sons and is hereby authorized and approved. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley, through Department of Public Works, has a need to acquire the services of an engineering consultant as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA 1944 A-20.4 or 20.5 is appropriate, whereas the engineering coordinator is determined and certified in writing that the value of the aggregate services provided by the vendor for the term of the contract will exceed $17,500. And whereas the anticipated term of the contract is for 12 months from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. And whereas Pinoni Associates has submitted a proposal dated November 22nd, 2024, indicating they will provide engineering services according to a fee schedule attached. And whereas Pinoni Associates has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year. And that the contract will prohibit Pinoni Associates from making any reportable contributions to the term of the contract. Whereas funds are available from account number 501-404-200, not to exceed $165,000 for general engineering services and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township Nutley entering into a contract with Pinoni Associates as described herein, be further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. Be further resolved that a notice of this action should be printed once in Nutley Sun in accordance with the local contract law. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca.
Whereas still bits for furnishing and delivering police dispatchers and crossing guard uniforms and equipment were publicly open and read on April 10th, 2024. And whereas turnout uniforms is the better bidder based on their prices. And whereas as per the original specifications, the contract is for two for two one-year extensions throughout December 31st, 2025. And the option for an extension for an additional year there for the existing contract with turnout uniforms is extended to December 31st, 2025. Whereas the funds in the amount of $147,000 are available in appropriation Title 5-01-310-200, police and dispatcher maintenance and allowance, and the funds in amount of $12,500 available in appropriations in Title 5-01-310-200, crossing guards allowance. And has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer and said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that the contract for furnishing and delivering police dispatchers and crossing guard uniforms and equipment, consistent with 2024 clothing voucher allocation, is hereby awarded to turnout uniforms 195 Patterson Avenue, Little Falls, New Jersey. I move it.
Stop it.
Commissioner Evans.
He stepped out.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have two on for this evening. Resolution number 35524. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of the Revised Statutes 40 Alpha:4-58, the following transfers of appropriations in the 2024 budget B and same are hereby authorized and approved from garbage and trash removal ONE, $117,000 to mental health program ONE, planning board ONE of $500 to planning board salary and wages of $500 for a total of $117,500. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
The second one I have on this evening is on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. It's resolution number 36224. This is more of that joint effort in one Nutley. We as a public affairs and health department have a need for mental health services and so does the Board of Education. And so we're looking to enter into a, a shared service agreement. Whereas the Uniform Shared Service and Consolidation Act, New Jersey Statute Anticipated 40 Alpha:65, that one sequence authorizes public entities to enter a contract with each other to subcontract any service which one of the parties to the agreement is empowered to render within its own jurisdiction. Whereas Rutgers, the state of New Jersey, Rutgers has contracted to provide mental health services to Nutley Public School District, the schools. Whereas the Township of Nutley Township has also benefited from these services provided as Rutgers has provided mental health services to family members of students and further community, provided community outreach and education through public mental health seminars. Whereas Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley desired to enter into a shared services agreement, authorizing the township to cover one half of the total cost of the professional services agreement between Rutgers and the school. Whereas funds are available from account number 4-01-118-209 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officers and said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that this resolution so authorize the township to pay $116,850 towards the amount due between the school and Rutgers for mental health services provided pursuant to their professional, provided to their, pursuant to their professional services agreement. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
He's, oh.
He's back.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca. Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That is all we have for this evening. I don't think we have a need for executives. Is that right?
So it's about time.
Our next meeting is Tuesday, December 17th at 7:00 PM. However, we are having a special session of the Board of Commission, Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, December 10th at 11:00 PM. No business will be conducted. We'll be going into executive session. So you're welcome to come to see us open the meeting, but it's going to be a very short one. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, so I, yeah, I forgot. Thank you, Commissioner Tucci and Commissioner Petracca and Commissioner Scarpelli. We have to open the meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to be heard on any issue at all may approach the microphone and state your name for the record. Seeing none, now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Before we vote, I just want to welcome Councilman Velez from Township of Belleville to our meeting. Nice seeing you, Frank. Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli. Commissioner Petracca. Mayor Kelly.
Yes, thank you for attending our meeting. We'll have to do an exchange program and come to Belleville sometime. Hi.
The time is now 8:02.